Okay councillors, please. All right, welcome councillors, members of the executive and members of the public joining us through the live stream. Swan Hill Rural City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and paves this respect to their elders past and present. I pray it be pleased, council.
We beseech you Lord that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Please proceed councillors. Mr McLean, do we have any apologies?
All councillors are present, Mr Mayor.
Confirmation of minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 23rd of June 2020, the extraordinary council meeting held on the 7th of July 2020, and the extraordinary council meeting held on the 14th of July 2020. Can I have a move please? I'll be very true to our record. Thank you councillor McPhee and seconded by councillor Johnson. Call in favour. Carrie unanimously. Declarations of conflict of interest. Mr McLean, do we have any or anyone in the room? No declarations of conflict of interest, thank you. Do we have any receptions and reading of petitions, memorials, joint letters and deputations?
No, Mr Mayor, none submitted.
Now, we do have questions from public question time, can I have a move to... Thank you councillor McPhee, seconded by councillor Jeffrey, that we suspend standing orders, all those in favour? Carrie. First question. From Mr John Ward. My question to you all is, why haven't you listened to all the information that is available in the community where the Pioneer Cinema, such as the history of it, how it was created and run for 30 years from 1962 to 1993 without the council's support? This option one will destroy the Pioneer Cinema as we know it.
All right, thank you Mr Ward for your question. Council has received two petitions with approximately 3,000 signatures in total on those two petitions in respect of our place. Council has also undertaken a number of community forums which were well attended. In total over 200 people attended and participated in the information and question and answer forum held in March. Our council has provided a forum for feedback on its website and has published draft proposals as it investigated two site options for the construction of our place. Council has engaged directly with a number of stakeholders, including the future occupants of the outplace facility, and has received feedback from a number of groups. The council continues to receive emails expressing opinions in respect of our place and its development. So, Mr Mayor, I'm saying that council has listened and council has heard a huge range of opinions in respect of our place, and it then falls to each councillor to assess the information that has been provided to them and to use their best endeavours to weigh up all of the information and to make a decision that each councillor believes is in the best long-term interests of the whole Swan Hill community. Council has done this at its meeting on the 7th of July 2020, and that decision will be reviewed through a notice of rescission to be considered later in this meeting.
Thank you, Mr McLean. The second question is a question from Mr Vincent Kirby, and follows after an extensive preamble. The question is, I ask that you request an extension to the grant and continue the consultation process. As a family, we would negotiate in good faith with an aim of achieving a good result for the community and Swan Hill. Will Swan Hill Rural City Council ask for this extension and continue consultation?
Okay, again, thank you to Mr Kirby for his question. We did receive this question approximately two weeks ago, and we have actually, we took the letter initially as a letter to council rather than a question in public question time, but we've had clarification since it was received with a question time form, so we're also reviewing the question here today in the council meeting. But we have already written to Mr Kirby with a full answer. Mr Kirby's question asked for an extension in the consultation period and also asked that he and his family be involved in future discussions about the design of our place. The decision in respect of where to build our place is being reviewed through a notice of rescission to be considered later in today's meeting, and pending the outcome of that decision, a number of possibilities open up. At this point in time, I'm really only able to respond in terms of the decision the council did make on the 7th of July, which was to build our place within the Pioneer Settlement and to proceed with that design. If that decision stands at the end of today's council meeting, then council staff will engage with not only the architect designing the building, but also with the stakeholder groups who will ultimately be occupants of the building, and we will involve each of those occupants in consultation throughout the design process. And it's not expected that this consultation of itself will necessitate any extensions in the process.
Thank you, Mr McLean. Third question comes from Mr Ainsley McGee. Council states they have regular consultation with stakeholders of our place. However, council does not listen to the largest but take holder, the rate payers. We have spoken, why does council still persist with option one?
Okay, thank you, Mr McGee. He asks why council persists with option one. And look, as stated in answers to earlier questions, council resolved to proceed with the construction of our place within the Pioneer Settlement, that is option one at this meeting of the 7th of July. This decision is really up for review through a notice of rescission later in the meeting, and that's probably the, that would then search out the answer to Mr McGee's question, truly not possible to fully answer it prior to that notice of rescission being dealt with, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Fourth question is from Mrs Lois Lockhart. Again, a lengthy preamble, but the question is, now the present council have the opportunity to further develop some river frontage and link everything together, will the council consider this suggestion or other suitable Murray River precincts for the outplace development?
So, thank you, Mrs Lockhart, you ask if council would consider an alternative site for the outplace development in the Murray River Precinct. Now, council has looked at a number of sites through its earlier feasibility studies and through an iterative and consultative process, but it narrowed down to one preferred site. Following some discussions with council and the community, that was later expanded out to consideration of the site options one and two, site option one being within the Pioneer Settlement and site option two being generally in the location of Spoon's Riverside. Now, as been stated earlier, council at its meeting two weeks ago resolved to proceed with site option one, and that decision is subject to review later in today's meeting. So I'm not able to preempt council's decision in respect of the rescission motion, and the council administration will take its lead from the direction provided by council later in the meeting.
Thank you, Mr McLean. Final question is again from Mr Ainsley McGee. Alternative to our place as part of bridge replacement plans, a co-location building, beside it complete with wharf where Piap or other river boats could link this site to the Pioneer Settlement. Relieving parking congestion, this idea has a lot of public support. Swan Hill Rural City Council, will you consider this proposal?
Thank you, Mr McGee. Council has considered a number of sites, the earlier feasibility work looked at a total of five sites. It was narrowed down to two sites, which I mentioned in the answer to the previous question, and council at its meeting on the 7th of July resolved to proceed on site option one, which is inside the Pioneer Settlement, believing that that provides the best long-term outcomes for all of the Swan Hill municipality. That's where we sit at this point. Again, noting that that decision is up for review through a notice of rescission later today.
Thank you, Mr McLean.
I thank all residents for their questions, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. That completes public question time. We will now resume standing orders. Thank you, Mr McPhee.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Jeffrey, all those in favour, we resume standing orders. And move on to section B reports. Section B 20.42, adoption of a 2020/21 budget. Mr Leighton, please.
Thanks Mayor. Yes, presenting to this afternoon the report in order to establish the 2021 budget. The budget obviously has been out to community consultation, and we have had a couple of special council meetings where submissions were received and heard, and last week there was a meeting to consider those submissions. I don't intend to read through the entire report, Mr Mayor, other than to say that the budget is just that, it is a budget, it's an indication and sets a direction. That direction is obviously subject to ongoing review throughout the year, and if necessary, the local government act gives council the power to develop a revised budget. And obviously, in the current situation with particularly relation to COVID, a lot of grants, stimulus packages flowing around relating to COVID, but also unknown length of time to which COVID may indeed affect us. It may be necessary in the future before the end of the calendar year for council to consider a revised budget. However, the purpose of this budget is at least to set that initial benchmark, enable council to set its rates and charges for the year and proceed along to implement the outcomes that are identified in the document. So the report contains some very specific recommendations, Mr Mayor, which do need to be part of any motion that council does adopt in order obviously to establish the exact rates in the dollar etc, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Leighton. Any questions councillors? Yes, councillor Benham.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The $4.3 million for the our region, our rivers funding, does that include the completion of the Bromley Road project?
Through you Mayor, the budget is based on the Bromley Road project being completed by the 30th of June.
Yes.
However, so that particular money that's in the budget wouldn't have related to the Bromley Road project. However, any money, grant money that we hadn't get received at the 30th of June will now be received this financial year and will contribute to that amount of money, will be on top of that amount of money. So because we have to draw a line in the sand at a particular point in time, it's based on a number of assumptions as to what projects will be completed by the end of the financial year, and we then develop the budget based on that. Any projects that aren't completed by the 30th of June get rolled over and will be in addition to the project shown in the budget.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any further questions councillors? Yes.
There's no further questions, Mr Mayor, I'll move the motion.
Thank you.
Let's go to the recommendations.
Can I have a second, second councillor Craig, all those in favour? I mean, sorry, we'd better have a bit of debate first. Well up. You have to speak to the motion.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, as always, the time I've been on council, it's, budget time's always a difficult time to make sure that we get efficient and effective use of resources. This budget is, shows an average rate rise of 1.86%, which is below what the state government app put on us. It proposes a $23.6 million capital works, and a net debt will decrease by 0.8 million, which I think is important as well. Previous council I've been involved in, we're looking at trying to reduce our net debt, which is important. In coming to the balance of 1.8%, 8.6% rate rise, we have five different areas of rates we look at, the commercial, residential, dry land, irrigation and industrial land. We try and split it right across the whole areas to make it an even playing field right across. We have looked at the commercial sector this year, the fact that they have been shuttered over COVID, which has had a big impact on their income throughout the year. So we tried to give them a bit of a rate reduction in that area to try and help their businesses and help them in the coming into the future. This is my third term on council, and Mr Leighton has been the director of corporate services for the last 20 years, well before my time on council, and been presenting those budgets. My understanding is this will be maybe his last budget he presents. He may be looking at it coming into the future. I would like to personally thank David for the effort he's done throughout his time in that role. I think he's played a great asset for this, put this council in a great financial position that we are in, we have been in and we will be in the future. So I think it's important that we recognise the input that David's had into that and his team, obviously, it's not just him, but he is the leader of the team, and I think we need recognition for that. So a lot of congratulating and congratulating on the work they put into doing this project, thank you.
Councillor McPhee, councillor McKay, any further speakers for the motion?
Sorry, I would also like to congratulate David Leighton on his performance, sincerely.
Thank you.
Thank you. There have been no further speakers, we'll move to a vote, all those in favour, passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda, audit committee, Mr Leighton McGee.
Yes, thanks Mayor. This is the regular quarterly update to council of the topics discussed at the audit committee meeting. The last meeting was held in June. And the summary of the items discussed there, obviously there's a confidential set of units also attached, which are fairly comprehensive and give councillors a complete detail of what was discussed. The audit committee is an important part of council's risk management function. There will be requirements in the new local government act that will change its role marginally. However, it will continue to focus on risk and financial management issues and offer another independent review of council's performance in those two areas, the report is for noted.
Thank you. Councillors, got any questions? There being no question, further questions, can I ask for a move please? Moved to councillor Jeffrey, second councillor Young, wish to speak to the motions, councillor Jeffrey.
No, just to, obviously the points, some of the discussing there are reviewed by, I guess, external members of the community that are appointed to the committee, and we have a couple of councillors on it to say, it gives us a bit more of an appreciation and understanding of the community on their perspective of power when you're going on as a councillor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Benham, just speak.
No, okay.
Any further speakers for all against? There being none, we'll go to a vote, all those in favour, passed unanimously. Page for councillors. Item B 20.44, COVID-19 Economic Response Relief and Recovery. Mr Engels.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report outlines an economic response and relief and recovery package that council has been undertaking over the last few months in response to the pandemic that we've had in place since March, or impacting since March this year. So the attached plan, the attachment one, does go through the response that council has already undertaken to assist businesses primarily, as well as residents to a certain extent in terms of hardship assessments for rates, and also outlines four recovery items, they being business support, advocacy and communication, infrastructure and local procurement, marketing and promotion. This has been developed in together with Swan Hill Inc. and the input from REVA, which is the Robbenvale Western Business Association. And it commenced development when we were looking like things were on the improve. So it is a document that's going to have to evolve and develop as things change with the pandemic and how it impacts on regional Victoria. But it does give staff some guidance about the sorts of things that we can continue to do to assist our local economy. And I'm recommending that council endorse the Economic Response Relief and Recovery Action Plan. They will be coming back with suggestions that are in addition to or instead of some of the actions that are listed in this action plan.
Thank you, questions councillors?
Yes, Mr McPhee. You state you've granted your work with REVA, the Robbenvale Western Business Association and Swan Hill Inc., do they have a strong involvement in this plan whilst you're at the whole process?
Look, certainly Swan Hill Inc. has, being an organisation that has a party employee, so working weekly with the executive officer there to do combined implementation. REVA being a volunteer organisation, certainly keeping them informed and involved with some of the business support packages that we have, but less actively involved than Swan Hill. But they certainly have seen the copy and have their input into it, yes.
Any further questions councillors, councillor Benham?
In here, and I can't find it at the moment, apologies, there's a statement that says we allow businesses to message using the council database for marketing their business in recovery. Can you just explain what that means? Is that a marketing database that people have subscribed to?
I'm going to give you what I think it is.
Okay.
And I'm not the expert on this either. We certainly have a database of businesses that we, you know, provide information to. I think it's using that database for other businesses to provide information on their business, does that make sense?
So business to business rather than business to consumer?
Yes.
Great, yeah, that does answer my question, thank you.
Thank you.
We've got one more. In the business support table that we've been given, there is under the infrastructure and local procurement, there's the livability infrastructure, and the objective is to create better infrastructure to entice new residents to the Swan Hill Rural City municipality. Enticing people to a rural area, you would think they would like to come here for rural living lifestyle blocks. Is there any provision as of right now to advocate to the state government for changes to our planning scheme?
So we are, it's not specifically identified in this document, but certainly using the council plan. We are currently awaiting quotations to come in to do the work that the state government has required us to do to allow us to do some rezoning. So that's underway now. We finally got agreement from the state government about the extent of work we need to do, which we only got about two weeks ago. And we're now out for quotations and tenders for an appropriate company to do that work for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillors, any further questions? There being none, can I ask for a move please?
I'll move, as per the recommendation.
Councillor Benham, do I have a second? Councillor McPhee, wish to speak to the motion, councillor Benham?
Really quickly, thank you, Mr Mayor. In this table, which I didn't ask a question about because it's pretty self-explanatory, weekly payments to local suppliers has now gone to weekly, which I think is more significant than just one line in this response, COVID response plan, given that small businesses are hemorrhaging at the moment and really hurting. That small move to help local suppliers with cash flow, I think is a really significant move and should be congratulated. So I thank you and your team for that. And I think having a plan in black and white for moving out of, even though it needs to be fluid, as is the situation, changes from day to day, and we're all aware of that. And as long as everybody else is aware of that, I think this is a great place to to move forward out of a very dark place, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers, yes, yes?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Yeah, look, just obviously COVID-19 created a complicit landscape right throughout, not only Australia, Victoria, the world. What will look like post-COVID, I think we're going to be in a different world. I think it's important, as a council, we do as much as we can to help our local businesses and our local economy. But I think the best people to support our local economy is the people that live here, to support the businesses that are here. And we are very lucky that we are in a lockdown at this stage in Swan Hill, the area. So while we've got the opportunity, let's make an effort and support our businesses so they're there post-COVID, and we've still got a business and an economy that we'll do in the future. So I think it's important role that we play, and we've got to continue supporting our locals.
Mr Councillor McPhee, any further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor Jeffrey.
Speaker Ollie, just to, we're to write the verbs that councillors Benham and McPhee have said, so to shop and local is something our community need to continue to do, and a lot of credit goes to the businesses that have moved to our platform. I've seen them as well, not the one, the basic page which about the cafes that you can shop and what the menus are, during home deliveries instead of, you know, where they can't set up at the park and cook pizzas, like the Mole Mole Pizza do, for example. Yeah, and I think they've taken really good steps to, you know, keeping the businesses going and it's good to, as I said, the community are shopping local where they can, just to encourage to keep it going, thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion, any against, no, do you wish to close, councillor Benham?
Don't need to, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, we'll go to a vote, all those in favour, passed unanimously. Item B 20.45, COVID events proposal, Mr Engels.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Again, I preface this report with it's a changing feast and we're not sure what and if this will be able to proceed. But we are seeking approval from council to use some of the New Year's Eve events funds to run three events in the municipality over the next, hopefully the next six months that will help our communities both be able to meet and commence recovery from the pandemic. One of those events is two drive-in cinemas in Manangatang and, I just had a...
Ollie.
Thank you. And then the second one is a more major event to be carried out in Swan Hill in the new year, potentially January, but whenever it's able to be done, which could include multicultural and indigenous components, food stalls, arts, dances, something that would potentially attract visitors. The amounts we're looking for is $7,000 to run the two drive-in cinemas and would allow local clubs and businesses to try and serve those drive-ins through food and beverages, and then the $5,000 funds for the larger event to, some seeding funding to get that started. Again, on the understanding that we might have to be fairly nimble about where they're held, and we might have to wait a few weeks to see whether there's an impact on regional Victoria with it shutting down before we proceed to organise some dates for those as well. But again, the recommendation is we're seeking use of $7,000 of funds for two drive-ins and $5,000 of funds for the planning of a Swan Hill event early in the new year.
Thank you, Mr Engels. Questions councillors? Yes. Councillor Craig.
The $5,000 requested for the fund, is it for the planning or for provision of services for the event?
A bit of both, yes.
So some of it would be used to fund the event?
It depends what it ends up looking like and what can be done. So a lot of the planning work will be done in fine by council staff as part of their normal roles.
Yes.
But we may have to, depending on what the event contains, some of that money will be used as reorganising as well as for the planning potentially, thank you.
Thank you, any further questions councillors? Yes, councillor Benham?
I'll move as per the recommendation, if there's no...
All six.
Okay, moved councillor Benham and seconded councillor Jeffrey. Do you wish to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a fabulous idea and a great way to use some funds. As you said, we are going to have to be slightly fluid with this, given border restrictions that have just become stricter again, and other restrictions that change day to day, hour to hour at the moment. But it is something to look forward to, and I think, given the state of play at the moment, we need something to look forward to, we need something positive to look forward to. And in Robbenvale and Manangatang, a drive-in movie which probably hasn't been seen since ever. You know, it hasn't been seen in Swan Hill since at least the early 80s, so apart from the one that was held a couple of weeks ago, I think this is something positive and great to look forward to, however small, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Benham, councillor Jeffrey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Certainly this will provide a bit of an event boost for our communities, get something out there and provide a bit of something different than what people are currently doing, being hoarded up at home or being socially restricted. Yeah, and just highlight to the community that community grants are open. So if there are any clubs or groups or organisations that have LIDs or other suggestions what they can do, there's a bit of an air to put in an application, and look, we'll do our best to support them as well. But full of support, just thank you.
Councillor Jeffrey, any further speakers for the motion, any against, there being none, we'll go to a vote, all those in favour, passed unanimously. Item B 20.46, planning permit application for the use of the land for a contractor's depot. Yes councillor McKay?
I would like to move to lay the report on the table to enable council officers to meet with the objector and the applicant to further refine the conditions and that the matter be brought back to a future meeting.
Now, this is a procedural motion, so we just, there's no debate, we just go straight to a vote.
We notice it, no Mr Mayor, I'll see that.
Seconded, sorry councillor McPhee, I'm jumping the gun, seconded by councillor McPhee. This is a procedural motion, so all those in favour, passed unanimously, thank you. Item B 20.47, Robbenvale Housing Strategy Action Plan, Mr Engels.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Council undertook a Robbenvale housing strategy last year and adopted such strategy. Officers have since been working on some of the actions out of that strategy and pulling together a refined action plan which is attached to this report. Some of the things that council has already undertaken is the subdivision of land in Ronalds... Street to allow for the development of eight houses, which will help the housing shortage in Robbenvale. Instigated the better approvals process for streamlining and improving all permits across council. The residential strategy that I mentioned previously to look for, to look to rezone land to have some larger residential lots. We will be advocating to the Robbenvale College and the Education Department to look at redeveloping some of the accommodation belonging to the Education Department that has not been used at the moment. And we do have the investment incentive, which is in council's investment incentive strategy to try and encourage investment in housing, particularly in Robbenvale. One of our economic development offices has also been, I'm going to say seconded, sort of seconded to the federal government to work on housing within not just Robbenvale but the municipality for workers for a six-month period. And that has been good in terms of the liaison with the federal government to coordinate foreign workers as well as the need for housing. The recommendation is that the action plan for the Robbenvale housing strategy be adopted and we, and continue the implementation of that plan to try and relieve the housing shortage in Robbenvale.
Thank you, Miss Green. Councillors, any questions? Councillor Jeffrey?
Just to press it, Director Green, in relation to the Royal Street, how is the progress going with the subdividing and getting some of those buildings ticked off?
David, I'd like to answer that one.
Thank you.
Mr Beck, I'd like to answer that question. The timber evaluation report has been finalised. We expect to appoint the timber for the subdivision works by the end of the week and then they are expected to commence subdivision works within four weeks. So that's where it's coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Benham.
Thank you. Miss Green, on page forty-two, where the council's specific actions, there's a point made saying council is planning to construct dwellings on recently subdivided land in Ronald Street and has applied for a $500,000 contribution from the state government. That's been applied for and won, hasn't it?
It's been announced, but we actually have to put in an application, which we're either done or about to do and then it gets formally announced. So we haven't got an agreement, but it has been announced, yes.
Yeah, Praxo, so further ado, Mr Mayor. The application has been launched, but we haven't had the formal approval yet.
Right.
Yeah, so it's been announced, but the actual signing has not happened.
So the formalities haven't been...
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions, councillors? No further questions, Mr Mayor, move it please.
I will move as per the recommendations.
Thank you, councillor Benham. Seconded by councillor Jeffrey. Do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor?
Very quickly, thank you, Mr Mayor. The Robbenvale housing strategy has been a long time coming. This is, it's a great plan and I actually was complimented during my travels in Robbenvale yesterday on the progress that council is making with regard to the housing strategy and the action plan being implemented. So well done to you and your team and let's hope this keeps moving forward with the momentum that it seems to have at the moment. Thank you.
Councillor Jeffrey?
Ah, just good to see progress and hopefully it gets up and running for the season.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against? We don't have any. Would you like to close, councillor Benham?
Don't need to, thank you.
Don't need to, thank you. We'll go to a vote. All those in favour, passed unanimously. Thank you. Item B twenty point four eight, Swan Hill Motorplex Master Plan Review. Miss Green, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Swan Hill Motorplex complex at Chism Reserve, which has only recently had the name changed to the Swan Hill Motorplex, has been incorporated for a relative, the group has been incorporated for a relatively short period of time. And it did take some time to get all the various clubs operating out of the Chism Reserve to become an incorporated body and give them the opportunity to then review the master plan, which has been in place for some time. So that occurred late last year and the master plan has been amended now in draft form to take into account some new recommendations coming from that incorporated body. And they include things like boundary fence, a new boundary fence, establishing events which include all clubs, working with all clubs to ensure building compliance, fencing as per approved boundaries for each of the clubs and to collectively improve all tracks. There are also a number of infrastructure items that are listed in that regarding water and siphons, water and drainage, power and those sorts of things that need improving. So the good thing is that the incorporated body has agreed on the priorities, the plan has now been updated and is attached. And we're now recommending that council adopt the reviewed action plan or master plan and that will certainly enable both the incorporated body and council to seek funding for hopefully some of those high priorities.
Okay, questions, councillors? Yes, councillor Jeffrey?
Thank you. For you, Mr Mayor. I was aware about twelve months ago that Northwick Electricity had access to an upgraded transformer that they wanted to donate or install for for your minimal costs for the motorplex. Are you aware of that or has that been...
I'm not aware of that at all.
Okay, thank you. I'll follow that, but I think it was a bit...
Who was it, sorry?
Northwick Electricity, they had contacted us. Oh, cool, I figured that was the same guy outside. Back question there, thank you.
Any further questions, councillors? No, yes, councillor Benham? Councillor McPhee, as per recommendation, do I have a second there? Councillor Young, do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, we have got a great facility out there. The fact that all our motorports are in one area is a great asset. I think the fact that they're working together, together the six clubs, is a terrific thing. They're becoming more incorporated and it's only appropriate that we get them into our ten magic project plan to allow for an opportunity for funding from the state government into the future to build on that facility and for them to piggyback on each other. It's about co-locating facilities right throughout the municipality we look at. This is where they are already co-located and they're starting to work together, which is a great thing. They're trying to improve each other's asset by benefiting from each other's clientele. So I think it's a great plan and it's to use themselves and put it together, which I think is important when they're just supporting in that area. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Councillor Young, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I just want to say, I've been the representative and the chair of that during this whole process and I think congratulations needs to go to the Economic Development Unit because it hasn't been an easy job to get six different organisations to come to agreement on a whole range of issues. So, and I think particularly Fiona Norman, she's played a wonderful role in all of this in getting that agreement. So just congratulations.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Against the motion? Therefore, none, we go to a vote. All those in favour, passed unanimously. Item B twenty point four nine, Tourism Advocacy Report. Miss Green, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Councillors, recall, last year council supported Murray River Tourism in their advocacy document to the state government. And we also made our own submissions to the Victorian Government at that time. Council requested that we prepare our own advocacy, tourism advocacy document, and this is now here for you to review and hopefully adopt. Some of the key themes that are in the document are around strengthening our tourism offering, looking for sites of our natural, cultural and improving and increasing our accommodation offering, making the most of our marketing spending, supporting industry by facilitating investment in our region, enhancing regional tourism boards, and that's our support of our Murray Region, Murray River Tourism Board, and better coordinating our effort at both local and regional levels, which I think we do relatively well, having our CEO on the board helps in that regard as well. You'll also note that the advocacy document has identified council projects that are being planned and that will continue to be part of our advocacy and also identified where further support for tourism projects needs to be focused. And that includes the Swan Hill to Lake Boga Active Trail, the need for serviced apartments and high-end accommodation, a new storyline for the laser light show at Pioneer Settlement and high-tech visitor experiences. They're the things that we're looking at into the future. The document is designed to assist council to identify projects to support tourism and to optimize opportunities to gain external funding. And it makes it a lot easier for council and officers when we have a document like this, when we are asked what are our tourism projects that we want assistance with by both state and federal government and a perfect timing given funding that's likely to be around over the next six to twelve months post-Covid pandemic. So I recommend that council endorse the tourism advocacy document, which we hope will promote the development of tourism within the region and the municipality.
Thank you, Miss Green. Questions?
This growing, I think it's in this budget that got money set aside to do the phase of the study for the Lake Boga, Swan Hill Active Trail. When will that be completed?
I'm not sure. This year?
Hmm. Further question, please, councillor McKay?
On page eighteen of our report, it says what's planned and it calls our place an Aboriginal interpretive centre. On various occasions, we've discussed that that is rather more expansive a definition than what we're actually planning. And I wonder why that, why we are not being quite clear to the state government about what is being provided in the our place development. It is a room without content and without any promise of employment. So I'd just respectfully like to bring that up. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
So will we change that? Will we change that? Thank you.
Councillor Jeffrey?
Further question, I just, if we're advocating for support to construct the Lake Boga, Swan Hill Active Trail, we don't know how much it's going to cost this year, are we putting council in a position where we're going to have to fund something when we don't know what that budget will be going to cost this year?
Hopefully very soon we will know how much it will cost.
Councillor Johnson?
Thanks, Miss Green. So as an advocacy document, is it actually available to the public? Is the content available to the public? Or would we perhaps through media releases, obviously we promote our projects and what's going on, but is it a document that could be made available?
I don't think there's anything to hide in making it available, so that would be my view.
And Murray Regional Tourism have copies and Swan Hill would have...
Primarily, we will use it as we need to based on what comes to us. But my view is that absolutely we give a copy to Murray River Tourism so they are aware of where we're at as of November July twenty twenty. Again, it's a fluid document that we might add to change.
Projects do that, sure.
Particularly in councillor, his comment around the Lake Boga Trail, if we do the assessment of how much it's going to cost and where it can go, that may change our mind about where it sits in terms of priorities, either bringing it forward or not.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillors? No further questions, can I have a mover please?
I move the motion as per the recommendation, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee, do I have a second there? Councillor McKay, do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. As with any advocacy strategy in any document, we do plans, budgets, they've got to be adaptable to change because things do change in time. I think it's important that we do focus on tourism in the area. It actually brings new money to our economy. It's not just recirculating money from the people within our municipality. Tourism actually brings new money to the area and encourages and grows our economy. It's a really important part. I think we've got to look to the future. Obviously, if things don't pan out that it's going to cost too much to implement, oil and wood, we won't implement those things. But these are things that we're highlighting in the next short term and there'll be other things come on this document in time to come. But the greatest ambassador for our region is the people itself. We need to sell our region ourselves. With the way, we're talking a lot about Covid today, the way Covid's looking, there's an opportunity for local tourism into our area from Melbourne when they get better and other areas. Obviously, we aren't going to bring Covid with them, but once they get better, there's that opportunity to come in for our regional tourism. And that's the sort of thing we've got to piggyback on the back of with this document and it's a great thing to use for any possible funding into the future through state or federal grants. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor McPhee, would you like to speak?
I'm very much in agreement and I think that generally speaking, the whole region is having a renewed appreciation of our great living environment and our living standards and our way of life. And so we are becoming those advocates because people are much more appreciative in the present time. So I believe there's a lot of renewed activity in tourism locally. I think that we just made some inquiries at the Pioneer, no, the caravan park that had their busiest period for this year, in the last few years, and these holidays just gone by. And also was reading a media article about in Western Australia, we're also having extremely busy times in, with domestic tourism. So it's a great thing that we have this advocacy document. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against? Do you wish to pause, Mr Councillor McPhee? Okay, we'll go to a vote. All those in favour, passed unanimously. Item B twenty dot fifty, Review of the Municipal Emergency Management Plan. Mr McPhee, that goes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It is a requirement of the Emergencies Management Act nineteen eighty-six for council to prepare and to maintain municipal emergency management plan. Recently, the version six of that plan was adopted by the Emergency Management Planning Committee, the Municipal Emergency Management Planning Committee, and that plan is now presented to council for formal adoption.
Thank you, Miss Beck, any questions please? Yes, councillor Benham?
I do, thank you, Mr Mayor. On page one forty, no, where is it? One sixty-four, under two point three point two, the demography, we've got Robbenvale, the Robbenvale district area listed as a population of three thousand three hundred and thirteen. Last year, we had a geographic of population study done where the Robbenvale population was, and we adopted that study to use the population of seven thousand nine hundred and ninety. Is there a reason we haven't used it in this document?
My understanding is that this is using the census data, which is used for emergency management, that that can be corrected by much more knowledgeable sources.
Look, I've got chaired that committee, young Mr Mayor, if I may, I do chair that committee and as Miss Beckcovey did say, it is based on the thing. But I think it's an appropriate inclusion, we do include it in every other document. So even if we have a note in there on a demography, a chapter, a paragraph along those lines, that our perceived idea of the Robbenvale population is such, I mean, if it's a clear message, we should be sending it across and that's something else we're...
Yes.
...raise as well. Thank you.
Which begs another question, thank you, Mr Mayor. Does an extra four and a half thousand people have any bearing on the emergency response plan or has that been allowed for throughout this document? Because it's a really thorough emergency response management plan, it really is, but I'm just wondering if another four and a half thousand people in that region might have any bearing on that?
I would imagine it would.
Look, obviously it does, but unfortunately, all state government departments, whether it be education, police, ambulance, hospitals, they all go by the statistics, the ABS statistics. We can only advocate, obviously going by those statistics, we should have more places, we should have more education, we should have more health services in the Robbenvale area. But unfortunately, this is a thing we've got to advocate for through council and through the study we're carrying, the population, to try and increase that. But as it stands, the state government and federal government always base their services based on the ABS.
Thank you. Any more?
But yeah, it leads to another question. It's when council adopted the geographic of population study and we said we would advocate to state government, is this then a case of which comes first, the chicken or the egg? I know, and I respect what you're saying with regard to the state government departments listen to the census data, but isn't this another sticking point where we should be advocating through this document? But if there was the requirement for emergency response in the Robbenvale district, the difference in population here in the plan could be critical?
Mr Mayor, I might just, yeah. Yeah, I think we have to agree with the premise of the question. Primarily, in a pandemic situation or an evacuation situation, the actual population really... really matters. Other than that, the resources tend to scale up based on the scale of the emergency that we're dealing with. But pretty clearly, whether it's an evacuation or a pandemic response, we don't know how many people are there and to be dealt with.
Correct.
And the New South Wales border closures might change that again as to how many people we do and don't have to deal with.
Any further questions, councillors? None, yes.
Can I move the motion with a slight amendment? Let me go back because I have it written down. With the amendment, the councillor got the amended municipal emergency management plan version six with a footnote reference to the geographic study two thousand and nineteen, Robbenvale population, I'm going to fast forward this, Sharon, and I haven't got it written down.
To the reference to the geographic population study? With councils leave, it actually has a specific name. Can we dig out the name of that study?
Geographic, what came off of that?
Population study.
Population study, yeah.
Noting the true population of Robbenvale.
Well, that is a couple of this.
I'm happy to say that, Mr McGee.
Yes, sorry, just a point of difference with true populations. There's no guarantee around it. It was based on data. So the, something needs to come in before true population estimated.
Council endorsed population because we have adopted that as.
Likely. The likely population. An apology. He's counsel. We should have picked that up. Usually do a scan for the population thing.
Yep. You have to put that as a motion there?
I'm happy with that as a motion.
This is the motion rather than amendment. You've moved this motion?
Yes.
Okay. Now, do I have a second, councillor McPhee has seconded the motion. Do you wish to speak to the motion now?
I think I've pretty much said everything, Mr Mayor, but it is, when I did see that population, I thought, my first thought would be if there was an emergency response. And it is a very, very thorough document. It's a very, very thorough plan. And again, we're in that very, very good position as Swan Hill Royal City Council that we have to emergency responders on council to help with these documents and these plans put in place. But when there is a difference or a perceived difference of four and a half thousand people, that could be critical. So, and again, it's an opportunity to advocate for the likely population of Robbenvale as per our own study. So I think we should use that. But again, well done. This is, again, another example of having emergency services on council being vital in the preparation of these emergency management plans, which we hope we will never have to use, but in these unprecedented times, there is every chance we will have to. So we need to be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Green. Councillor McPhee.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, I chair this committee and as I say, look, it's a really important document. We are, as council, the custodians of this document. Emergency services are the ones that play, actually do the response. Council never respond to a emergency as such. They are a resource that the emergency service, whether it be police, CFA, DHHS, DHHS or DLP, whoever is the controlling agency will call on council if it's outside their control. And these are plans, just basically, they're high level plans for those emergency services to how to interact with council services to assist them in their day to days delivery. Most times, those organisations can deal with the situation on their own, but if it gets to a bigger extent, that's when it becomes a call on council for support in relation to through Emergency Management Victoria Act there. And it's continually monitored and taken by what the council or Benham said in relation to the statistics in Robbenvale. Yes, we've got to identify them and show them in every council document we have because they are what we're advocating for. Unfortunately, we've got to keep advocating because the services that are provided in Robbenvale are provided on the ABS stats. We're saying they're wrong. We've just got to keep advocating to get them wrong. And they're obviously wrong in other areas too. So I think the federal government need to look at how they conduct statistics into the future and do, rather than just a head count one day, look at other things that we look at, habitat, use of water, money, transactions, other methods of counting to verify the true population in every area. So we get a true benefit for those municipalities and for those towns that need the services right.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Any further speakers for the motion, any against? Do you wish to close, councillor?
I'd like to.
All being said, thank you. We will go to a vote. All those in favour? Thank you. Passed unanimously. Item B twenty point five one, irrigated crops in the Swan Hill local government area nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and eighteen. Mr Green, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a really important document that councils had produced for, through a company called Sunrise, and it gives us some really good information about what's happening in our agricultural sector, particularly around, well, in this case, irrigated farming. We are looking for one for dryland farming as well, so that is underway. It does give us information about the growth in irrigated farming, the change in the crops and the change to some permanent plantings as well, as opposed to seasonal plantings. This will help us when we're making planning decisions under our planning scheme. The fragmentation of farming land is not desirable in taking into account the trends that we have in irrigated farming. It also enables us to quantify the economic benefits from the expansion of horticulture, which will assist council to assess and evaluate proposed developments and their impact on agriculture. Some really good information in this document, both for council and for investors looking to invest within the municipality and potentially for the value adding industries as well when they can see what's happening here and what we do have, have growing. So the recommendation is that council receives this document and we release it for community information as a document to be used not just by council but by the agricultural sector and hopefully the manufacturing sector and for use when, again, seeking funding.
Thank you, Ms Green. Any questions, councillors? Yes, councillor Johnson.
Ms Green, no doubt this is some great information and data collection is a major job and then analysing data is even more major. I'm just wondering if there's a process in place to perhaps capture up to date ongoing information. I suppose my biggest concern with this is it's to twenty eighteen, it's two years old. You know, farming practices change and they're evolving all the time. Regularly. And, you know, a lot of our documents are fluid and we do, you know, we need to change, change our views at times. So I suppose what I would like to see in the future is an ongoing document, whether that's annual, every two years or whatever the case may be, but is there something in place?
We're looking at doing it every two years. And if we put in place some sort of arrangement like that, that will reduce costs because they know that they're going to get this request every two years. So, yeah, so every two years is what we're looking at.
So the idea would be that they would be collecting data regularly rather than being engaged in it for two years?
Yeah, so they'd be collecting it this year for, you know, so two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty, which we wouldn't get till next year. Yeah, probably like next year.
Any further questions, councillors?
I have a question.
Ms Green, this, you'll agree with me or whatever, but this one point one eight billion of productive agriculture stemmed from a report that indicated that the entire Sunrise produced some three hundred and sixty million, again, by the Official Bureau of Statistics, which we talked about before. And of course, a lot of us in the municipality know straight out that that could not possibly be correct. And this is one of the reasons why we got this report, you know, instigated this report was to actually find out what the true figures were, not just relying on the Bureau of Statistics and the initiative taken by this council to actually get this report done and not relying on Bureau of Statistics exactly the same as we did with the population. Don't believe the official data, get our own done and then do, conduct your own reports and find out what the real situation is. So would you agree that this is one of the most powerful documents that we could have to find out this sort of economic input to the state and federal economy?
Oh, look, absolutely. Whether it's agriculture or manufacturing or tourism, having some idea of the impact it has on the local economy and more broadly, it's really valuable information for us to be able to seek new development, change development, as I said, seek funding, you know, the impact on roads, knowing that we've got an extra, I can't remember how many hectares it is now under irrigated in plantings means more impact on our roads. So it gives us that sort of information to enable us to plan for the future. So it is vitally important.
Exactly. What about councillor Young, you have a motion?
I'd just like to move the motion.
This is as further recommendation. Thank you, councillor Young. Do I have a second? Councillor MacKay, you should speak to the motion, councillor Young.
Yes, I do. This is an initiative that came out of the Agribusiness Advisory Group, which is really pleasing to see because Murrage has been doing this for a long time under the Sunrise twenty-one initiative and Swan Hill hasn't been included in that. So pushing for it to happen, I think, is just so essential and it's important for their funding applications that go in from the council and also the private applications as well, where farmers are putting in for different amounts of money and they can actually call on this data to back up the information that they're providing and know that it comes from a reputable source. So just congratulations to the Economic Development Unit and I think also the Agribusiness Advisory Group.
Thank you, councillor. Any further speakers? Yes, councillor MacKay.
Yes, I'll speak. Thank you. I also agree. It's a wonderful report. It's great to contradict some of the myths such as that irrigated agriculture is dying and it is in no way dying in our region. It is flourishing. However, what I do note is that the area of irrigated agriculture has increased by seventy four percent. And I guess this highlights the questions about the sustainability of the ongoing increase into the future and how important it is to know just how, how much it's expanded and to be aware that it is expanded without us having a complete and total understanding of how much water is available. So we've operated, generally speaking, communities without floodplain harvesting still exists, which means we don't absolutely know that the amount of water available and the day that comes in this country when metering and compliance are absolutely the same across the country will help the sustainability of family farms in our region. And so in this way, it's a valuable document as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor MacKay. Any further speakers? Yes, councillor Jeffrey.
I'll speak for the motion. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Certainly, this is probably one of the most riveting ways that a community can lay their words on because it really does set out and shows in data the strength in our farming sectors, the effort that they put in employment and production for export and basically those food bars for croissants. And I guess also the industries that have any support to transport, whether it be by truck or train. And it also identifies us as a council in the world where we play and make an appropriate planning decisions when it comes to families moving off the farm and houses and how to take the exit in the future.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Any further speakers for? Any further speakers against? Councillor Young, would you like to close?
No, I think we've covered everything.
Thank you. Then we'll go to a vote. All those in favour? Passed unanimously. Thank you. We now move on to section C. Decisions which need action and notification. Item C twenty point one one.
Mr Mayor, this is a pursuant to your report or is proven as a recommendation?
As further recognition, do I have a second? I second councillor Johnson. All those in favour? Passed unanimously. Item C twenty point one two, signing seal report.
Again, Mr Mayor, just the usual monthly report noting the use of the council seal on various documents. Quite a number, as we've got a number of leases coming due and being renewed, so can answer questions if councillors have any, otherwise recommending that council notes the actions of signing and sealing the document under delegation.
Any questions, councillors? If there are no further questions, can I ask for a mover, please? Move councillor Jeffrey. Seconded councillor Benham. Do you wish to speak to the debate, councillor Jeffrey? No procedural. No further speakers for or against. I would move to a vote. All those in favour? Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, can I remove the motion?
You're foreshadowing your motion or you wish to move the motion?
I move a motion that we amend the speaking times allocated in our local law for the ten minutes in section D to a maximum of ten minutes for this council.
Mr Mayor, that's a matter that the local law provides you with discretion over and doesn't require a council motion.
Okay, so we can just say okay for that?
Local law is structured that speaking times are set unless amended by the mayor or chair. It actually says chair, which is given there.
Yep. Okay, councillor Jeffrey. Well, for those who need it, we can go to up to ten minutes, thank you, on the next two items if they are so presented. Now, the next item is notices of motion, D item twenty point four. I am vacating the chair for this motion.
Mr Mayor, you need to, the council needs to elect a chair.
The council needs to elect a chair.
Call for nominations.
Mr Mayor, I'll nominate a deputy mayor to take the chair.
Thank you. Seconded for that nomination councillor Johnson. All those in favour? Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey.
So this is a rising story, Mr Mayor. Yes, they do. It's really handed now to councillor MacKay to pick a motion.
Well, I'd like, thank you. Councillors, so before us, we have item D twenty point four, rescission motion, or rescission, rescission of motion, B twenty point four, Our Place Project site location. Councillor MacKay.
Having given due notice, I, councillor MacKay, move that council rescind its motion number B twenty point forty at the special council meeting, seventh of July twenty twenty. Do I need to read out the motion?
No, that's the motion. Yep. Do we have a second?
We'll send the man, Mr Mayor.
Councillor McPhee. Wish to speak further to that, councillor MacKay?
I'll read my, I don't like to usually read, but I have written something already. Once again, commendation to our council executive fair initiative in leading this project across several municipalities to achieve the funding for the Our Region Project, of which the Our Place Project is one. The Our Place Project has the potential to become an economically and socially beneficial community and visitor resource. As councillors, we have an important role as a conduit between residents of the municipality and the executive. I believe we have the ability to guide this project to enable it to reach its full potential now and for the next forty to fifty years. A decision on the location and concept design for Our Place Project was made without open community consultation. Discussions were held with stakeholder groups. Time constraints may have contributed to this limited consultation. Once this decision was publicised, community after all resulted. Much of the criticism of the project was focused on concern the building will interrupt and reduce the function and wholeness of Swan Hill's two major visitor and hospitality centres, the Piney Settlement and Spoons. There were persistent concerns that the attempt to combine all components, the Aboriginal Cultural Hub, the Art Gallery and Piney Settlement, would reduce and dilute all elements. The two hundred and twenty seventeen Murray River Interpretive Centre feasibility study backs up this criticism. It advised that it would not be advisable strategic to co-locate the Piney Settlement with the Murray River Interpretive Centre, which needs to have a much wider focus beyond history. Another strong line of criticism has been that the lack of prominent location would impact its long-term success as a tourist and community facility. Any businessperson understands the absolute and continued advantage that a high-profile site provides. It could be argued that both the Piney Settlement and the Swan Hill Art Gallery have experienced reduced custom due to their location over the years, out of sight, out of mind. Both of these concerns expressed by community have a practical and reasoned basis. Large numbers attended community consultation during the early part of the year in good faith with the ex. with the expectation that a successful outcome will be achieved and their concerns listened to. During February, Swan Hill Royal City Council by vote decided to return to consultation and to reconsider sites, limiting consideration to the Spoons Piney Settlement Art Gallery precinct. Covid nineteen restrictions, regulations have restricted and limited free community participation in consultation. Swan Hill Royal City Council decided, rather than to pause consultation, to proceed using online methods. It could be argued that the online survey and concept designs were intrinsically biased. The questions also failed to provide numerical results as to exact preferred location. For a respondent to ensure that their preferred site was understood, it was necessarily to type in further comments. Many of the public have only their phones for internet access. To input text is laborious and time-consuming and therefore a deterrent. These flaws and biases warrant further investigation. However, through these comments provided, it has been possible for councillors to understand that there are strong numbers whose preferences were not to build within the Piney Settlement. There is also a strong feeling against demolition and rebuilding of Spoons. In regard to the consultation with the Aboriginal community, councillors have generally not been provided with the detail of the consultation and have had to request this from staff. It is essential that a genuine, open conversation and consultation around all aspects of the project is able to continue. At this stage, it is fair to say that in addition to supportive statements from the Aboriginal community, there has also been concern and mixed feelings expressed about the project. Councillors were faced with a difficult choice between two sites with long and short-term practical and strategic problems. Additionally, Covid nineteen has thrown the economy and in particular the visitor economy into disarray. Swan Hill has not been a strong international tourism destination. It is more consistently a domestic tourism destination. Domestic tourism is predicted to grow substantially in the coming years. International travel will be severely restricted. As a council, we should be responsive to the changing world scene and willing to incorporate this into our planning. These are not normal times. The Piney Settlement and Spoons are our most popular visitor attractions. To commence major building at either site will negatively impact on visitor experiences at a time when we should be doing everything we can to grow this market. The time is now. Future employment growth must be maximised, not jeopardised. It is also important that we continue with the project. Do not give up on it with a substantial investment for the region. Our feasibility studies in themselves have been valuable. They've demonstrated the weaknesses in plan option one and option two. Community concerns have not had a meaningful response or result. It is understandable that the community feels frustrated. We need to identify the best plan for our region for now and into the future. For this reason, I encourage councillors to rescind the decision of July seventh. I would also like to add another part. In the twenty seventeen feasibility study, which looked at the viability of Aboriginal cultural centres, I was perplexed in the centres that this undermined the feasibility of such an operation. I was perplexed that some centres that had high visitor numbers were kept out of the comparisons. So they were not used as comparators. And for that I would include Brambach as well as two others. They were not included as comparisons. They do have high visitor numbers. And I guess I could accept that as being rational or, you know, good research. However, in the comparators was also included the Melbourne Museum, which is surely a vastly different establishment. So I'm just bringing up this weakness in the original feasibility study. I did say I would bring some more information to the table. I've also made some inquiries into the Aubrey Art Gallery because we generally consider that it's often said around the traps that art galleries cost money. I would agree, Aubrey, I know people will say is a large centre. They invested ten million dollars into their art gallery and increased visitation from approximately twenty to thirty thousand to eighty thousand. And it's now considered to generate about ten million dollars into their economy. And through visitor stays and visitor attendance at that place, it also has a large area of community use for workshops, engagement and activity for the community. So I put these here as new information. I think that we need to open our eyes and look at other options. The other information I'd like to bring to the table is that we now have an online petition circulating advocating for a art gallery, an Aboriginal cultural centre in a separate site to the Piney Settlement altogether. That has well over six hundred signatures. And I think this is a valid point. I also reviewed many of the letters that were sent in to us over the last three or four months. And many of those letters are not holding on to the Piney Settlement only for sentimental reasons or their childhood memories. They also advocate concerns about how a new development they would welcome in a new site. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mackay. Councillor Macfee?
Yeah, thanks Mister Chair. Look, as councillors, we have an obligation to abide by the councillor code of conduct principles that are found in the Local Government Act under section seventy-six A BA. These include, one highlight, is treating all persons with respect and have due regard to the opinions, beliefs, rights and responsibilities of other councillors, council staff and other persons. We are very lucky to live in a democratic society and these principles are what I follow at all times in accepting alternative views. The discussion around the location of Our Place has raised many different views within our community. The initial decision to build this facility inside the Piney Settlement was made with two different councillors involved around the chamber, being councillor Catas and councillor Norton, who have since resigned. Another vote was taken last month with option one or option two, basically inside or outside the settlement. A vote was taken and option one was favored in sight with four councillors voting for that option. This is what democracy is all about. I did not choose right and not do not support that vote. But now moving forward, as a council, as a community, we must do the best we can to make that the best facility we can in that location. I have had members of the community approach me to vote for option one and others for option two. And then there are others for a completely different location. I've respected all those different views and made a decision on what I believe the majority of the community want and what is in the best for our community now and into the future, as I'm sure all other councillors around this chamber have done that as well. I've seconded this rescission motion, albeit that I don't believe it is appropriate really. I believe a rescission motion is about, when we had a four-three vote, the democratic decision was made. Nothing new has come to the table. If there was councillors vacant or legislation had changed since that decision, yes. That's what a rescission motion is about. Not just because it was a closed vote or you don't agree with the decision. Strategies and plans, councillor Mackay mentioned a strategy back in two thousand and seventeen. As in this meeting we've just discussed. There are strategies and plans that are implemented all the time. They are living documents. They change. They are appropriate at the time. That is now three years old, that strategy. We've got to look forward. I agree with the four facilities being together. The opportunity down the track, when you talk about the community consultation we've had and the surveys were done with the Aboriginal community. The thing I noted mostly amongst all parts of the Aboriginal community was their connection to Pendle Island. By building this facility, whether it be option one or option two, opens that ability into the future to build them a standalone facility, maybe on Pendle Island. It's not for me to tell them where to build that facility. We are not building an interpretive centre now. We are building their ability to maintain an interpretive centre into the future. Even though I seconded this motion, I will be voting against it for those reasons. I think it's important that we discuss it again, but we've got to understand at some time, like I mentioned before, at the very start of my speech, is that there's decisions made by this council, by council previously that I don't agree with. There'll be decisions made by councillors in the future that I don't agree with. That is what democracy is about. I've got to thank those people that had a strong advocacy in supporting not going to the Pioneer Settlement. They've done a great job in relation to that. It's time to move on now and let's do the best we can for our community in the future, do the best facility we can and accept the democratic decision. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you councillor Macfee. Other other speakers to the motion. Councillor Young?
Yes, I'd like to speak against this rescission motion. I believe that this whole situation has been surrounded by a whole lot of contradiction, misinformation and a lot of hearsay. I'm really excited about the project and I see it as an opportunity that we may not ever see again. Activities that have taken place through social media and personal carriage of information has been portrayed as being, this is what the community want. The fact is that the option one preference for Our Place has been and is widely supported by the majority of the Swan Hill community. This is based on a desire to ensure that the Pioneer Settlement continues on into future years by making change to increase visitor numbers so the Pioneer Settlement is not a financial burden to the community and ratepayers. The Community Advisory Group to the Art Gallery started advocating for a renewed gallery fifteen years ago. They have recently voted for option one. The volunteers and the friends of the Pioneer Settlement have shown their support for option one because they see the need to make changes in the interests of the continuity of the settlement. The Indigenous community have shown their support through the One Direction Group and further responses from individual community members after visits and pamphlets were dropped off to the residents to fill in. I've also attended many meetings with community groups, spoken to individuals and looked at the information on the community consultations. The support is there, but it's being expressed in a quiet, rational manner. I don't believe that the consultation's been limited. I believe it's been extensive. Just a few relevant points. This whole exercise is about saving the Pioneer Settlement and not destroying it. As I previously stated when I seconded the motion for option one, this is backed up and supported by many reports and recommendations undertaken over many years. There is no reason why further down the track, when the bridge is settled and the location finally decided and confirmed, that we can't have development on the north side of the bridge incorporating Indigenous culture and maybe the building of the old Swan Hill Wharf. That is not a reason to stop this development now. The bridge could still be a long way off. So do we just sit there in limbo stopping other initiatives and opportunities while we wait? The Riverfront Master Plan is a concept document that could always be subject to change to suit current circumstances, not set in concrete. After all the work that's been put into this joint initiative to apply for and be granted this money, it would be a travesty to now say, we don't want the money. To me, this is an option that should never be considered. Other councils were really appreciative of the funding and Swan Hill led the process so that eight councils could benefit from the activities. If we do not take the money, it would almost certainly affect future funding applications. And we would be known as a community who can't make up their mind about what they want. I've heard statements from residents like, here we go again. This is why Swan Hill hasn't developed to its full potential. This is the bridge all over again. Others have said, we need to make a decision and move on. We just don't need a climate of negativity. We have a very active and successful farming and manufacturing community, new subdivisions and development happening. We have a new ninety-bed aged care facility, people wanting to move here to set up in business. Let's take this climate and positivity going. What a better way than to further develop tourism and visitor numbers through art and creativity and retain the current Spoons location. I believe this rescission motion is not in the best interest of the community, the council, the business community, ratepayers and citizens. We need to dispel the notion that is being put out there, this is what the community wants, because it is certainly not what I've been hearing. Sure, some people prefer option two, but not enough to stop the whole process. I would urge the community to make sure that the information that has been given is accurate, includes all the information and not just selected areas to suit a certain viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Young. Any further speakers?
I would like to speak with the motion.
Yep, councillor Moore?
It's okay to dream. Dream of the grass being greener on the other side of the bridge, out the highway or up the road around the corner. Dreams are free. Reality however is different. Reality is much more time-consuming and much more expensive. So what is the reality we're dealing with? The reality is the Pioneer Settlement has been on life support for many, many years. And as councillor Young has mentioned, we are trying to save the Pioneer Settlement. Pioneer Settlement and the Information Centre alone have cost ratepayers around fourteen million dollars in the last nine years. That's fourteen million dollars of ratepayers hard earned. Do I as a councillor sit on my hands and do nothing and consent to spending another fourteen million dollars over the next decade? Or indeed the decline of the Pioneer Settlement? My answer is a categorical no. The projected expenditure in the twenty twenty-one budget that we have just passed for the Pioneer Settlement operation and visitor services alone is in excess of one point three million. We add the art gallery cost to that, we're up over one point six million. The entire rating revenue from the commercial sector in the immediate Swan Hill era is a little over just one point three million. So the entire revenue goes into running just those three services and then we add to have to add more to it. More money from the farmers in Robben Vale, or Manangateng, or Ultima, or the industrials from everywhere around. We get more money to add to it. Clearly, two significant changes need to happen. The first is to co-locate services, which is an act which reduces costs in its own right. The second is to drive up attendances at the Pioneer Settlement and the placement of Our Place is critical to that outcome. And that is the proposed site option one. If you've ever had to sell product through a supermarket and get your product on the shelf, you soon realise the old adage, eye line is byline. It's the reason online sales are blowing huge holes through the retail sector. The eye line now is the computer screen. We however are selling experiences. So what does that look like at site option one and the proposed Our Place? In other words, what's within the eye line inside the building for a start? Well, there'll be experiences in there that will include the art gallery, the information on visitor services, the Aboriginal space to be developed in partnership with the One Direction Action Committee. And that is a very exciting prospect. And as we've just heard, we've just passed our tourism advocacy document. There'll be technology in there for more experiences and we'll be able to on-sell the whole district and the whole region through that area. What's within the eye line outside Our Place? We have the historic gem, which we've just had half a million dollars spent on. The working paddle boat and tourist boat, the Pai'at, that will be developed in partnership with the One Direction Action Committee, the Pendle Island experience. And make note councillors, there is no Pendle Island north of the bridge. There is no Pendle Island out the road opposite the police station where there've been many suggestions. There is no Pendle Island anywhere else. That is the access for it. And the One Direction Action Committee has expressed that many a time. And then there's the greater Pioneer Settlement in itself, incidentally. And all those exhibits are still going to be there. And a range of experiences that were there, and not to forget finally, the Spoons dining experience, which is adjacent to the Pioneer Settlement. We have been criticised for not listening. Well, we have been listening for nearly two years or eighteen months. We've listened to the people with the deep emotional connection and attachment to the Pioneer Settlement. We understand that. People put their heart and soul into building that place. I know. I know many people who have and I can understand that connection. We've listened to the One Direction Committee and their deep connection to country on Pendle Island. And incidentally, we've also listened to those with deep connections to their wallets and their hard earned. And they expect us to do the right thing and then spend their money wisely. These are some of the realities that this plan is to address. There are no fairies at the bottom of the garden, economic garden, tooling away at the printing presses, churning out hundred dollar notes for council to spend. It's not nineteen sixty-three, it's not nineteen seventy-three anymore. The world has changed. Tourism is a different and hugely competitive industry and future tourists demand different things and different experiences. Councillors, again, I say it's okay to dream. Dreams are free. Reality is different. It's much more expensive and much more time-consuming. Wake up, vote this rescission motion down, respect the democratic process and let's get on. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Moore. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Benham?
Thank you Mister Chair. I enjoy living in a free and democratic society, as councillor Macfee has touched on, as councillor Moore has also touched on. And I think we all do. That's why we're here. I enjoy the process of decision-making. I enjoy the democratic process even when I don't agree with the outcome, but I respect it. We should all respect it. We're incredibly lucky to live in this country and indeed this part of it. Councillors are the elected members of the community, democratically elected to make hard decisions based on all the information afforded to us from a number of avenues. Community sentiment, council officers in the executive, experts in their field. And using all of this information, we make the very best decision possible from all of this information. That is our job. And like I said last week, if we can't dissect all of this information, we've got no business being in this chamber. This chamber of a free and democratic society. We're elected to do a job. Objectively analyse the facts, community feedback and expert information and consider all of this with our generational future in mind whilst at the same time... Whilst at the same time respecting the history of those before us and we absolutely do. I stand with councillor Moore and councillor Young in saying we are here to save the settlement. We can't do one and not the other. We can't respect history and those before us and not think about the future, especially in this instance. We can't keep looking back and doing what has always been done before. Because if we keep doing what we've always done, we're going to keep getting what we've always got and that is lack of progress. And my generation, the Xs and the Ys, depending on which figures you look at, are crying out for progress. And until now, it's been fought with strong battle lines. But now, as hard as it is to hear, a line has been drawn. This region is full of entrepreneurial and progressive thinkers. We were in national press not that long ago telling the world that. So shouldn't we give them a council with a vision for the future? There are community members who want to see our region grow and flourish with the future of our families, all of our families in mind. And that's often the sentiment you don't hear publicly. But we do as councillors every day, as all the other councillors have said. It's time to stop stalling and it's time to adopt that entrepreneurial vision that we've been telling the rest of the country about and make the future happen now. We've waited long enough. Yes, we look back to the plans of the original desires and the founders of the Pioneer Settlement and we should, we absolutely should. And we should thank them for starting what has been a magnificent open air museum. But we can't keep looking back to 1995 or 1970. In fact, if we do look back to 1995, there's an article that we were supplied today and a note of what the then executive officer of the Swan Hill Promotion and Development Corporation, as it was then, said that the Pioneer Settlement has seen steady decline since it opened in the 70s. And that then it was recognised, then it was recognised to never be able to get back to 200,000 per year, visitors per year that it did have. As councillor Moore stated, the Pioneer Settlement has lost around $14 million over the last nine years. And councillors, I'm sure you don't want to be and I don't want to be the council that moves to close the Pioneer Settlement because we simply cannot afford to run it anymore, because that's where it's headed. From a business perspective, that is where it's headed. That has been recognised time after time after time. And I believe councils should be congratulated in keeping it afloat for this long. It is time to stop looking back. It's time to stop living in the past. It's time, as hard as it might be to hear that, it's time that we change with the times. Because if we don't, there will come a time in the very near future when the motion on the table will be to cease operations at the Pioneer Settlement and at the art gallery, which is also running at a loss. The democratic process that has been vested in us is trying to be interrupted in this moment. We need to be punching above our weight with progression with domestic tourism and this building allows that and we should move forward with the motion as it stood in the special meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Benham. Any, councillor Johnson?
Thanks, Mr Chair. Clearly, there's already been plenty said, but I do want to be on record as being against the decision motion. I think there's been a balance of respectful and equally passionate supporters that want this facility to go ahead. And they've largely gone unheard and they may have even been people that signed a petition. Businesses, ratepayers, residents and expats, all of those people have contacted us, both in the negative and in the positive. And to this end, I feel that there still is really strong support to proceed with a co-located, multi-functional facility that will support and promote the survival of the Pioneer Settlement, promote Aboriginal culture and business, value add to tourism in a really meaningful way and give Swan Hill the boost it deserves.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. All councillors have spoken, so councillor McKay would like to close.
Yes, indeed, I would. I would like to dispute that I am suggesting a return to the past. I come from a family of business people, hospitality, it's a long line in my family. And I'm going to speak a little bit and briefly about them. My grandparents own the hotel at Ny West and in frustration at not being on the main highway, my grandfather bought land on the highway because passing trade.
Councillor McKay, in replying to those speaking, you can only reply in terms of the issues they've raised.
Okay, well, I am replying to the accusation that I am looking backwards and stopping progress. I want more progress. I would like to see this development live and grow as a community asset and a thriving tourist facility, but a thriving community asset. I believe the location and constantly redeveloping on a successful Pioneer Settlement, redeveloping that site is in fact backwards looking. What I'm looking for us to do is to develop a new facility, cause further stays in our region and give Aboriginal culture and indeed the art gallery and a centre for culture an appropriate location where it can grow and evolve with time. This is a big building without any real new content and that disturbs me greatly. Because we should be reflecting the contemporary, exciting, multicultural, diverse region that we are instead of labouring in the same area, continually trying to improve on what is already a lovely facility. Yes, I think it's sad to hear the other councillors talk about how much money the Pioneer Settlement costs us. We as a council spend a lot of money on a lot of things. A lot of those things don't generate any income, but the Pioneer Settlement generates an enormous amount of flow on benefits to our community in visitor stays and in community facility for our region. I'm actually looking forward, I'm thinking it has been a long time since we ever had a new facility. We could be putting a new entrance to the Pioneer Settlement and visitor information services. That would be spectacular. And proceeding with an art gallery, cultural centre in another location and our town and our region would be singing our praises. I rest my case.
Right away, thank you. Councillor McKay, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour of the rescission motion? All those against? Motion is debated. I'll hand the chair back to councillor Mayor Moore.
May 3, 2020. Item D 20.5, health place, site location, given the outcome of the previous motion. Councillor McKay, do you wish to proceed with this or do you wish to withdraw?
I'll read it out and see if I get a second.
Okay, thank you.
Commence planning, I have given due notice, I move that council commence planning to build a substantial new entrance building for the Pioneer Settlement and visitor information services at the site of the Rose Garden that is less intrusive to the Pioneer Settlement. Two, provide for offices and meeting space for the Aboriginal business hub within the new building that will be significantly larger than the planned for within Option One or Option Two, enabling meaningful use. Three, apply for a generous extension to project timelines because COVID-19 has had a negative impact on all types of community consultation. This has meant that meaningful consultation on the project has been difficult to achieve. Four, scope repairs to the walking bridge to Pendle Island to enable First Nations community members to access the area for cultural and educational purposes. Five, engage in meaningful substantive consultation with the local Aboriginal community to co-design and collaborate to develop a plan for a cultural interpretive centre and co-located Swan Hill Art Gallery. And six, take into greater consideration the community feedback from online consultations and meeting with the wider Swan Hill community.
Moving that councillor McKay, do we have a second? We don't have a second, councillor McKay, the motion laxes. Thank you. Section E, urgent items not included in the agenda, do we have any? No, none. Section F, to consider an order on councillor reports. Who's going first today? Councillor Johnson, would you like to go first?
Yes, I will, thank you. I have nothing to report, I'm going to stay.
Councillor McFay.
Once again, COVID's quiet, we're right down to here, nothing.
Stuff for triple COVID quiet, councillor McKay?
Only our frequent council meetings that we've had this month and assemblies.
Thank you. Councillor Benham.
I've got quite a bit actually. On the 24th, I had a lunch catch up with the Robbenvale State Member, Ellie Cupper, about some Robbenvale projects. So the tourism advocacy document will be one that I'm sure she will love to get her hands on because that's some of the projects we spoke about. I attended the Robbenvale Euston Rotary Club changeover dinner. On the 25th, I attended a Reba meeting, which are now being held again, which is great. I had a catch up with Anne Webster, a federal MP. On the 7th of July, I caught up with Thelma Chilly, who is our land broker for a quick Zoom catch up, which turned out to be not so quick, but fantastic. There was a WAC urgent meeting on the 10th of July. There was another Macquet meeting on the 17th of July. And I caught up with the objectors to the planning permit that was laid on the table today. So things happy? Quite busy.
Councillor Johnson.
Nothing to report, Mr Mayor. COVID's got everyone.
I've not attended the council meetings and assemblies, but I did have an online meeting of the aerodrome parties for the extension of the runway and development of the hangar facility. And that's it.
COVID quiet's got Councillor Me right down as well. I went to a virtual meeting with GWM Water regarding water reticulation throughout the Rimmer Nally. Numerous meetings, discussions around the border closure with New South Wales and phone hookups with various politicians and representatives there. And the tour of Anne Webster around her industrial area as well, which was very well received. Thank you. Now councillors, we are now going to move into camera and we'll conclude the public section of the meeting. Yes, exactly, councillor Johnson, three seconds by councillor Johnson, all in favour. Just passed unanimously, as councillors remain seated and silent until we...